Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, Wednesday, April 30th, 2014 meeting. Commissioner Kokoski has our dog today.
High-energy Jack Russell Terrier. How many dogs were full, aren't we? Twenty-seven dogs at the dog kennel, so we really need your help. We want to find them all good homes, so come down to the kennel. If High-energy Jack Russell's not your type of dog, I'm sure we got some mellow, laid-back dogs too. I think she wants to go home with you Tiffany.
I don't have enough.
You don't have enough? Okay, well come down to the kennel, check us out on the website if you don't have a chance to get down there, but come, please help us out. The dog is available right now, so you can go down there immediately after the meeting and pick her up.
Madam Clerk, do you want to start with the announcements first?
I was going to say we want to do Pride Day activities, Mr. Bailey? And a staff?
Good morning Commissioners, greetings from the 5th floor. This year we have Pride Week, not Pride Day. It's the first attempt by the Board of Trustees of Keep Lorraine County Beautiful to change things up. So starting on Monday, May 12th, we will be at the Stocker Art Center Gallery, and they will be doing a bottle and cans and newspaper and magazines, Second Life Creative Art Display there. It says bring your magazines, bring your empty cans and bottles, your empty wine bottles, and not borrow some of ours and help us create a creative art display. I guess this thing's going to be a traveling display when they get it all done throughout the county throughout the summer, so. That's event number one on Monday. On the 13th of May, from 10 to noon, we will have at the Lorraine County Collection Center, we'll have a presentation by OSU Extension, and they will be presenting a question to answer in a PowerPoint presentation on vegetable gardening, alright? On Wednesday, May 14th, from 12 noon to 1:00 PM, and then again from 1:30 to 3:00 PM at the Stocker Art Center, OSU Extension will again be holding a session on composting and vegetable gardening, alright? And then on most important day, which is May 15th, Republic Services Landfill and Recycling Center will be open to the public, open house. And they will be open from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, tours of the new recycling center, tours of the landfill are available, and this is brought to you by Republic. They will have food, handouts, and all the things that they do there at the landfill and the recycling center at Republic Waste. Thursday, well again on Wednesday, I missed Thursday I mean, is Avon Lake Library. The Garden Club will be putting on a 45-minute program, beautification projects focusing on creating wildflower and herb gardens. So that's going on Avon Library on Thursday at 11:00 AM on May 15th. Then on May 16th, Joanna's Gardens, Garden Scape Nursery, on the Guilford Road in Oberlin, will be having a 10 to 12:00 PM, basic planting techniques, one-on-one planting shrubs, annuals and vegetables. Then from 2:00 to 4:00 PM, which is a very important one to our community, stormwater pollution prevention, how to make home rain gardens. So Joanna will be doing that presentation on Friday afternoon. Then on Saturday is Pride Day, alright? Avon will be having a shredding event there at the City Hall, starting at 9:00 AM, in their parking lot, and we'll be participating in the garden project with Church of Open Door and the Filtrax Corporation at the Collection Center, and distributing 500 gardens to people in need throughout the Lorraine County area. And they get eight socks, a sprinkling can, a book on how to plant the garden, how to care for the garden, even recipes, and they get the plants to put in the gardens, and there'll be somebody usually assist them in planting their gardens. So hopefully we'll get 500 gardens out into the community to feed the needy this year.
Nice.
So that's Pride Week in a nutshell. Any questions?
None whatsoever.
Cabs out there, it's going out its first weekend, all four cabs will be out this weekend, so.
Cab is, you're going to tell us what that is again?
Clean and beautiful. And you have the trailers before you Commissioners, and they're all retrofitted and ready to go. Two of them are dedicated basically to larger projects, and the two smaller ones dedicated to roadside and cleanups, alright?
Do you have this electronically so we can give it to Hal to put on our taping?
Yep.
If you could please get that down so Hal can get it, and that way everybody can see what we're doing and what's available for the public?
This will be up on the website, alright? We came down early to get this before you because it's in May, and this is the 30th April, so we wanted people to know what's available and what's going on. So Pride Week's coming, alright?
You brought staff with you, are they going to be presenting their programs?
Brandi's in charge of education for the most part, and Tiffany does most of our marketing grants, so they, see Tiffany about the cab, see Brandi about any education programs you need, alright?
I think we need to brag about the 513 vehicles that participated and recycled 12 tons of paper, and participants also donated 1,245 pounds of food to Second Harvest Food Bank at our shred day.
I'm still recovering.
Are you?
This was-
Great, great job you guys.
Shred day has exploded on us, alright? This best way to describe it, we always seen a tapering off the crowd by 11:00 AM, it didn't happen this time. We had double-wide still at noon. I've never seen this many people come out to a shred event in my life since I left central Ohio, but we expected it there, you know? You know, we're at the point now where we're going to have to sit down with our vendor and talk to them about how we approach it in October, because we almost got caught with our pants down, we were able to handle everybody and take care of everybody, and that's always a concern, that everybody gets their records shredded correctly, and we were able to do that, but it's a tough job when you get hit with that many cars. And of course we had the donations to the food bank, which went all very well, very well.
Do we need more shredding equipment, is that what your concern was for the vendor to bring in?
We may have to get another third truck at this point. We're going to talk to Dana about this and see what her advice is here next week. This has become a big event here in this county, I'm surprised that they rolled out the way they did. It's the first time I've seen Bill Curtis getting nervous handling traffic.
Bill Curtis is one of our environmental officers.
He actually got shook up a little bit, so yeah, it really turned out very well. We were able to accommodate everybody, and that's what we're there to do, and we're able to get things for the food bank.
I also ran into a couple of our ladies that work at the Collection Center over the weekend at a fundraiser, and they mentioned that we're getting like 100 cars a day coming through our Collection Center, so maybe next week you can give us an update as to how many people that actually have been served through the Collection Center?
We can do that, we can do that. We know we jumped from a 10,000 car average in 2012, and 10, 11, to suddenly 12,000 car average last year, alright? It looks like we're headed for 15,000 this year.
Right, cool.
Alright, so.
I would just want to bring this up, the cab fleet that you have?
Yeah.
Who would they call in order to register?
Tiffany. Tiffany's in our office, the 1-800 number, we'll get it to Tiffany, and Tiffany will take care of them, alright?
Alright, and the reason for it, a lot of baseball teams, they're getting ready to clean up their fields, unfortunately weather hasn't been cooperating with them, but a great program for the baseball teams and to get out there, help clean the community up and get their season ready.
Yeah, that's right.
Get the field ready for the season.
We're ready to go.
What's that 800 number, do you know?
1-800-449-5463.
449, 5463, 800-549-5463?
499, it actually sounds out H-H-W line.
H-H-W line.
1-800-H-H-W line.
So Hal, can we make sure we put that up on the screen also, because we've done three different versions of it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, great job you guys.
Madam Clerk?
Under resolutions, number one, Job and Family Services bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Investment?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Advances?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you Commissioner, I do have several potential new hires over at Job and Family Services and Golden Acres. I'd like to discuss with you in executive session, and then if you'd like to get an update on the living negotiations at 911, we can talk a bit about that. I think that should do it for me this morning, so both of those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meetings, hey, we go into this next session and talk about those two items, thank you.
Because we do have, we are the majority at 11 o'clock today at the courthouse.
We may have to take a break and come back in.
We'll be done by 11 o'clock.
Okay, wonderful.
I just noticed we have a new clock.
Yes, isn't it, retro?
It's very retro, looks very Teresa.
Madam Clerk.
You're not saying she's old, are you?
No, I just thought it would something she would bring in.
You're lucky, huh?
Yes.
American bandstand.
Wow, approve way the reading in the minutes of April 23rd?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorized payment of $683,894 to Corsa for the insurance renewal effective May 1st, 2014, through April 30, 2015.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion?
Yeah, I don't know if you, I had a couple companies contact me, they want to come in and talk to us about bidding on our health insurance and-
This isn't health, this is our liability insurance for the County Commissioners Association.
Yeah, this is to the state.
Oh, I'm thinking, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of another one. Well why don't I give you an update where we're at on that since you brought it up? We'll be out in the marketplace for RFPs in May or June, because we're reaching the end of our third year of some of our benefits.
Okay.
So if they're looking to quote county benefits packages, just let me have their information, I'll make sure they get a copy of the RFP.
Alright, very good.
And this course is a reduction from previous years, and I don't know if it was from that seminar that everybody attended, if that's why they gave us the reduction or because our costs have gone down?
Of course your staff do a wonderful, wonderful thing managing it.
And we've raised our limits.
Let me briefly tell you, we-
Well yeah, we went from 5,000 to 25,000.
Well, yeah, yes and no.
No.
Couple things we did, we did go technically from 20, from a 5,000 deductible to a 25,000 deductible on minor claims, because we examined the loss ratio compared to premium and discovered that there could be some benefits there. Obviously you know we did that in our health insurance too, and in the first year we did it after trending 10 years and seeing a lot of room for improvement, we got slammed in the first year, and it took us two years to get over that. What we're still doing with the deductible is we're billing all the departments at the 5,000 level, but we're buying at the 25,000 level, so we're putting a cushion into place so that we can handle those spike claims. Last year we were good, you know, a little less than $40,000 to the good on that, just on that alone, and that'll go into a reserve for the next couple of years. But also they were able to pay out a bigger dividend from the reserve pool down at Corsa that we all participated in, and that reduced some of our insurance costs, because they invest the funds from the pool down in Corsa. It's one of the better programs that we participated in with them. I don't know much about whether the training that they offer directly correlates to less claims and lower premiums, because they just, they offer it as a service, but it could. Sometimes avoiding liability is the best way not to have liability, but I'm pretty pleased with how this has gone, and I'm looking forward to another, another really good year. Because we were getting, we were getting dinged pretty heavily on the premium because of those $5,000 claims, but remember, everyone now, we eat the first 25,000, and we've-
It's a big hit now.
Well, it comes out of your pool, because the departments are only going to pay us 5,000, if they're not a general fund department, then we're going to pick up the 20,000 after that. I think we'll have, we'll have positive, we'll have positive trend in the next couple of years, and once the reserves establish strongly, then we can start charging even a lower premium to the departments, similar to what we're doing with the retrospective workers comp.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff apply for the 2015 Selective Traffic Enforcement Program Grant and 2015 Impaired Driving Enforcement Program Grant, these grants are reversible for the Ohio Department of Public Safety for overtime costs of deputies working designated traffic blitz beginning October 1st, 2014 through September 30, 2015.
I see you're here today, Captain Drazdowski, do you have any comments or?
You're 15 minutes of fame, we haven't seen you in a long time.
Not here, I see him everywhere else.
Right, yeah.
He's everywhere, I think he might be running for office or something, I see him at all these fundraisers all the time.
I think he has a twin.
Bread and the wealth.
Yeah.
Now, this is basically an enforcement grant, we've been doing it for about three or four years, and it's gone up each year because of the amount of activity that we generate, but it just isn't just DUI enforcement, it goes around prom times, it's aggressive driving grants, it's blitzes for seat belts, things like that, so it's a whole spectrum of things we're doing, and it covers all over the county, and the guy's been doing a really good job, so we have to apply for now for next year. We're currently running through the grant through September, then we'll have another one. But it works out real well.
Also moved.
Second? Any further discussion? Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Did you happen to get a chance to drive our $700,000 tank?
No.
No, are you going to?
I don't get to play with them.
You don't get to play with that?
They don't let drives play with that.
No, they don't, they don't, Kavanaugh doesn't let me play with it, but yeah, they unveiled that yesterday, the chief deputy, I got to give him credit, he knows how to manipulate that stuff, and actually one of our guys, our vehicle maintenance coordinator was qualified, he ended up driving that thing back from Texas.
Wow.
He took his family down and they brought it back because it saved us. We compared it between us and Lorraine, we saved about $3,000 bringing it back ourselves, but he's qualified to drive that.
There's been a lot of miles on that thing though.
Pardon me?
So?
Well, that, the whole, basically that vehicle there, the whole chassis is brand new, it's brand new, so it actually only has like 1,200 miles on it now.
So how long did it-
But he learned the whole vehicle and everything it's capable of doing, and what basically he had said, he spent more time every time he went to get fuel, because everybody kept coming up to him, asking him about it, and he ended up meeting an individual who used to work on those.
Wow.
So he gave him a lot of input as to what the good and bad points are, but that's about three-quarters of a million dollar piece of equipment that was given to the county that now is going to be used for SWAT team.
I think that since the folks that may be watching us, maybe not all of them saw the unveiling, you want to tell them what it is?
Basically, it's, they call it an MRAP, it's a mine-resistant vehicle that was used in Afghanistan for IEDs, things like that, and this thing can take any kind of weaponry that's shot at it, but basically what it's going to do now, for their situation, is they can haul several individuals in a SWAT team to go to a scene, you don't have to have a bunch of vehicles, or if you get into the scene where there's high-power rifles, they can literally bring this vehicle in, it's got bulletproof glass, everything, if they have to retrieve an individual, they can retrieve an individual, put them in the back and get them out. I mean this vehicle's very high-tech, it's all computerized inside, we'll add our radio equipment to it, but the nice thing about it, it's available, the way the SWAT team's set up, it's available to the entire county, so whatever agency, if a city has a problem, we're able to get that out of there. We got one and Lorraine got one, basically there was only four for the entire state of Ohio.
Wow.
So we're very fortunate that the chief deputy, a lot of the equipment he's got, he's probably got about a million dollars plus equipment that was donated, that when you go out on a SWAT call-out, it could save a life, and that's what this equipment will do.
So now the city of Lorraine and the county both have a bigger vehicle than Tom Kelly's.
Absolutely, and it can knock Tom Kelly's over, trust me.
Well the question is, will we be able to handle the potholes?
You know, actually, you know, the thing of it is, I talked to, I talked to our vehicle maintenance coordinator about it, and he said driving it back was nothing, because it's six-wheel drive, it's independent suspension, I mean it's very high-tech.
And it said it went 65 miles an hour.
Yeah, yeah, and it's radial tires and everything, so I mean the military's very good, when they build something, they spare no, no expense. Tax dollars are not a problem.
For the guys in service, they better not spare any.
Well exactly, considering what it's going to do, and now, and they're, you know, reallocating these back to local agencies, it's a piece of equipment we'd never be able to afford, so the chief deputy and sheriff's got to be giving a lot of credit for that.
Yep. Yep, thank you.
Alrighty.
Apply for the 2014, 2015 deer grant in the amount of $22,661, which represents 50% of the base salary of an officer for the nine-month school year, said local match is $22,661 to be paid from the sheriff's salary account.
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
I have that this one, thank you.
What about the $900 resolution for Soil and Water? Did you want to bring that up? Did you, were you aware of it?
Well I'm aware of it, but, but I thought we were going to keep Soil and Water District accepted from the Commissioners, what happened Don? I was hoping they would just take a letter of commitment.
I did get a call back from John Bourne after hours, they still need a, the check to flow through the general fund though, it can't be from stormwater directly. I can, we do have budget available though.
Let's do it this way, then the district will pay back the general fund, he has to have an appropriation there.
Yes.
I was just hoping that my good integrity in a letter would help, but I guess it wasn't.
They want a check. Can you blame them?
Let's go ahead, yeah.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and do that appropriation. What we're doing is we're partnering with the Soil and Water for some software, we give them a portion of, they can match it with state dollars, as we've done with other partnering with them.
Madam Clerk?
Yeah, we're authorizing payment today in the amount of $900 to Soil and Water to purchase the necessary software to track their programs, and it will be paid from miscellaneous other expenses and Stormwater District will be reimbursed.
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Nothing else then?
I didn't know I had that, so I guess I have no further action hopefully, thank you.
Mr. Innes?
Commissioners, I do have three matters pending or imminent litigation that I need to discuss with you in executive session.
Commissioners report.
I actually had two goodwill meetings this week, one of them was to talk about a fundraiser that we're going to have, it's the second fundraiser for goodwill of Lorraine County, it's going to be October 11th, we're not sure where it's going to be, I actually want to get some prices from the train station and see how much they would charge for a fundraiser there, Mr. Cordez?
Double.
Double. The other meeting was a regular board meeting that we had, and I just want to give kudos to their job fair, they had 435 people come through, over 30 employers, and many people were hired right on the spot, so congratulations to those individuals who were able to obtain a job. Sunday I attended a fundraiser at the VFW in Amherst for the Valor Home, it was a great event, you were there?
We, yeah, we were there.
Yeah, the lady that cooked, cooked all the food, served the food, and also donated all the food, so it was, you know, almost all the money that was generated went straight to Valor Home, so thank you to that wonderful woman, I'm not sure what her name was, I just know that she cooks for Good Shepherd Church in Amherst, and her and her daughter I believe served it, cooked it, and donated it, so it was nice. And then yesterday, we had our last transit meeting before the election, we're looking for some volunteers, if you'd like to stand out at the polls to encourage people to vote for the Transit Levy, don't forget, it's less than a penny a day, really needed, necessary to generate $400,000, and, which will bring in an additional $400,000 from the federal government, so please make it out to the polls, we also have our Crime Lab Levy, which is also the same, same amount, and that also is much needed, so. Bev, do you want to come up and talk anymore about the transit? We have, we're less than a week away.
Hi, my name is Bev Beidelman, Chairman of the Transit Levy, good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Mr. Innes, Mr. Cordez, Ms. Teresa, we actually have, we got our posters, so I wanted everyone to, to see those, and this is what we're going to, like, try to hold up in the proper place around the election polls, and also we're going to try to fix them so we can put something on the back and make signs, because our funds were limited, but we did really good. We actually passed out mailers that were mailed on Saturday to certain areas in the county, so we did that, and we did the flyers, and also I have a number, if you're interested in helping us with any type of advertisement, or working at the polls, or putting up a few signs, you can call Forrest Bullock's, and his number is, it's area code 440-667-5080. He's in charge of the volunteers that we're trying to get together to help us finish this, and we're excited, we just believe this is going to happen, and you know that Lorraine County's going to get some better transportation, thank you.
Thank you Bev, been a great chairperson for this, thank you very much for doing that, stepping forward. End of my report.
You covered most of it Commissioner, I did get a chance to attend Friday evening at the Ramadi, and kick off the Hispanic Leadership Conference, Tim Carrion and Mike Farrar did a great job in regards to going over what the entire programming would be, they had a full house at the Ramadi, and so, again, and again, the fundraiser for the Valor Home went off very well, had a meeting yesterday with Team Lorraine County discussing an interim executive director while we move forward on the search with the search committee, and we have-
You want to talk about Bill Encini?
Oh yeah, that was next down here. Had a discussion with Judge Valencini from Avon Lake Court, he presented last week here about asking to move forward to full-time. We had instructed our county administrator, Mr. Cordez, to see what the cost would be, his numbers came up to $36,000 to $38,000 more, the general fund's 40% share to municipal courts. My discussion with Judge Valencini was about that, and where Avon Lake was on it. Avon Lake is going to be meeting May 5th in committee, correct Teresa?
Correct.
Based on your discussions with their clerk, and his discussions with the State Supreme Court said would only be about $12,400, I instructed the judge that I would like to have him call, Mr. Cordez, to discuss the differences in the cost, and I don't know if that happened or not, but I hope to have this discussion for next week, after Avon[1725.62] After Avon Lake meets.
I received an email from, from, from the judge last evening. One of the, one of the major differences, part of the overall cost is, is going to be healthcare benefits that we pay a per hour share of, at least for the clerk of courts and the judge. The, apparently, Avon isn't providing that right now, and I don't know if they're going to provide it or exactly what they're doing with that. So I think eventually, we're gonna have those costs. The judge indicated that he thought the cost without those benefits would be about $13,000, and he said there's some difference in the amount of salaries. But normally, if the judge goes full-time, most people. I did a simple calculation. I took the city of Oberlin, that's a one-judge court. I think it's fairly representative of what eventually, within a small period of time, I believe, this court will cost. I'm not trying to say we shouldn't do it or we should do it. I think that that's a fair analogy. Their salaries are a little bit higher in Oberlin, but if you look around, most of the courts end up paying about the same amount of money. And so I believe that eventually, that'll be the impact to us. Now, whether you believe that the judgeship is, needs to be expanded in Avon Lake, that's a decision that's in your pay grade, not mine. But I will talk to the judge again today or tomorrow. But I can't see that when their judge is full-time or their clerk of courts full-time, that they won't want us to participate in paying for a portion of the supplemental benefits that come with a full-time position.
Well, at least there was some correspondence.
The judge's very cordial, very easy to work with.
And they'll be meeting Avon Lake next Monday on there, so we might know something by Tuesday as to where direction is of the city of Avon Lake. That's the end of my report.
Actually, busy. Friday was extremely busy for me. Started off here at the Elyria Courthouse during the reading of the proclamation that the board signed for the Workers' Day Memorial, hosted by the AFL-CIO. I want to thank the engineers' offices. It's a little wet out there. They provided the equipment. And also, the tent, they keep the speakers dry, so thank you for going out there and working on that, especially you, Neil. And they set that up again in the city of Lorraine for a 4:00 meeting, presentation, the wreath and everything. Great event, good turnout. Thank you AFL-CIO for remembering our individuals who lost their lives on the job. Later, and they went over to the Polish Fishman fundraiser. That's where they provide youth with the experience of going out, going fishing, and just being involved. Great turnout. Unfortunately, I didn't win the reverse raffle of $3,000, but.
I was in there. I just, I had the Hispanic Leadership Conference, so I missed the Polish fishermen.
Well, I ended up going there.
Yeah, I did that, too.
I had a great dinner, spoke with a lot of individuals out there. Then I went over to Amherst, where they had another fundraiser for Amherst Township, where the community comes together, gives donations, so they can do improvements at the Amherst Township Park. If you haven't been down there in a while, communities really come together, putting together softball fields, baseball fields, soccer fields, and turning that into something, not just for Amherst Township, but for the surrounding community. You have teams from Elyria, Lorraine, Amherst, Oberlin, Vermillion, that all go down there and play. So great job to the community. Then went over to the Hispanic, the Freedom Concert at Southview. Great to see so much local talent there. And just a great event, like you said, Tim Carion and all the leaders that were involved. Saturday morning, started off with a little unusual day. Actually, I was the best man at my ex-father-in-law's wedding. And then between pictures, I ran over to the college for the Hispanic Leadership, where I got to talk with some of the speakers and other leaders in the community. And then went to the Sheffield Township Steak Fry. If you haven't been to the Sheffield Township Fire Department Steak Fry, one of the best steak fries out there. The guys do a great job. And after eating the steak, I went over to the gallow at the DeLucas for the Leadership Conference, or Leadership Dinner. On it. So my weekend was pretty much filled with.
Eating.
God bless the campaign trail.
And.
Eating, eating, and more eating.
Yeah, so my suits were getting a little tight. I'm gonna have to start going out and exercising.
Why don't you go to the kennel, get that Jack Russell, that one'll wear you out. Take you for a walk every day, 10 times a day.
Just exercise. Your neighbors will just let you clean the cages.
Yeah, we're down a couple of kennel keepers.
They can see your speeches. Look at that.
Yeah, we'll have to come up with something on that. And then I'm sure, just a lot of other events that were going on. I did something, multiple events yesterday. I'm drawing a blank. Must be a sign of old age. But a lot of good work being done by our community leaders with residents, getting involved and helping out. That's the important thing. And, oh, I'm sorry, one of the, very exciting. Wellington Kiwanis celebrated their 90th anniversary last night. And the guest speaker was Bob DiBiase from the Cleveland Indians.
Wow.
And he did a great job talking about future prospects. I guess down in Columbus, they have a power hitter, since we don't have much power on the Indians lineup this year. Six foot four, 250 pounds, trying to grow to 270, with everything that he eats. And the thing that.
Start taking him to the fundraisers with you?
Well.
Start taking the guy to the fundraiser?
Yeah, I know. It probably cost me, I'll have to buy two meals. But they said what's really changed in baseball is the way that they proportion the meals for the players. They say, you know, we're putting 15 and 20 million dollars into these players. And when you go up there, they actually, they have four categories, and they split the plate off, and you can only give so much and eat so much, because at breakfast, spring training, you're eating breakfast, and you're out there running for four to five hours, and you come back for lunch and that. And then after the games, they have a chef that actually prepares meals for them. And you said, you know, it's a big difference from, you know, the 70s, when the guys would get done finishing the game, they would go get some hot dogs and fries, sit back in the clubhouse and drink beer. Or on the way home, maybe pick up a big burger from Wendy's or something. And just an amazing evening. Kiwanis did a great job. And most important, what they get back to the community, helping raise $2.5 million for improvement out in Wellington. So great job to the Kiwanis, the leaders, and everyone that made that events possible. End of my report.
Madam Clerk?
Board correspondents?
Will the reading be waived?
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning? It's like we have a sparse crowd. I'll make a motion going to executive session as outlined by the county administrator and county prosecutor.
Second?
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting.